Good evening. This time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded for those of you that are physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting. I see two of you that are on the agenda, though, so you won't have to listen to this part of it. Anyone that wants to address the council during the meeting will complete a request to speak forum, and they're available at the front entrance, and you will present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and those participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes' speaking time. So at this time, I will call to order the city council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace for March 8th, 2022. And I will be asking Councilmember Doug Wilson to offer an invocation tonight, and immediately following that will be Mayor Protam, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please stand for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Thank you, Mayor Protam Hussey. May we have a roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Protam Hussey?
Here.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Councilmember Allen is absent. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
Okay, thank you. We do have special presentations tonight. We have two of them. And so for our first, we have T. Milford Harrison, Division Four Director of the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. Mr. Harrison, very happy to have you here tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council, and Conrad, and Deborah. Thank you for helping me with arranging for today, for the night, Deborah. I appreciate it. It's okay if I call you Deborah? Okay, thank you. I am here as your representative on the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District. My district, Division Four, it's actually, they're called the division, not a district, but it includes the City of Grand Terrace, the City of Loma Linda, and the City of Redlands. And I switched Grand Terrace and Loma Linda to make sure to put them in the right order of importance. Yes. And in addition to that, I have the pleasure of dealing with Riverside Highland Water Company, who you may be familiar with. We have a good relationship with Riverside Highland, and matter of fact, we put a deal together that was consummated in December that was good for them and good for us as we continue with our goal of providing water for our children and our grandchildren. That really is the responsibility of San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District as the umbrella water agency over this entire valley. Thirteen retail water providers are under us, and we are responsible to each one of them to make sure that there's sufficient water for them to serve their customers for years to come. Right now, we have about four million acre feet of water in the San Bernardino Basin or the Bunker Hill Basin, whichever you prefer to call it, and that's about as much as Shasta Dam holds when it's full. We figure right now that our estimates are that we have enough water for the next thirty years. So we need to be cautious. We need to be conserving water, but we feel that there is no cause for alarm. I wanted to come and meet with you tonight and just get acquainted. Turns out, I know half the council that's here tonight anyway. The council reminded me that she was a customer of my wife and my little deli in Loma Linda that we had in 1987. It was when I was 12, but sure. Anyway, we, it was nice to make that acquaintance again. I have just three matters that I want to bring up to you very quickly. First of all, I want to tell you how upset I am with all the council members in the City of Grand Terrace. I also want to tell you how much impressed I am with your wisdom in stealing our deputy city manager from my town. This is a man that I have enjoyed to work with and as a friendship, as a friend for a long time, and you couldn't have done better, and I congratulate you. Number two comes from my daughter. My daughter's handicapped and has a very hard time getting out of her vehicle. She's confined to a scooter, so she's going in and out of stores and so forth. And she asked me if I would plead with you to turn Mr. TV video into a drive-through Starbucks. Just a little hint there, city manager. And then, last but not least, on April 27, we are having an Upper Santa Ana River luncheon, and you are all going to be invited to that. This is just a little pre-notice, but you're going to get a formal invitation, and we're going to invite your city to make a presentation about Grand Terrace at that meeting. This is our new function that is replacing the advisory council, and so we want each of the cities involved to have an opportunity to make a presentation about what's happening in your city, and we'll also have some other agenda items that will cover area, things that are happening in the valley and things that we're doing as a water district. The meeting on the 27th will be a lunch meeting, and it will be held in the beautiful dining hall of ESRI, E-S-R-I, in Redlands. So you're all invited, and we would be more than happy to have you join us. And I think, Mayor, you already told me you were going to be out of town that day, but maybe your schedule will change, but you'll send an appropriate representative, I'm sure. And that's all I had. Do you have any questions for me? I'd be happy to answer, and thank you for the time.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
And you don't have to go into great detail.
What?
You don't have to go into great detail, but you said that we have as much water as in Shasta Dam.
Yes.
And yet, we don't have a dam of that size around here. Where would that water be?
That is all underground. It's in our Bunker Hill Basin where we have extensive facilities along with San Bernardino Valley Water Conservation District, who has 70 percolation ponds where the water that comes out of the mountains and the water that we bring down from the state water project are put back, are put into the ground. And just this last week, on Thursday, on Wednesday, we had a groundbreaking for a whole new set of basins along Green Spot Road in Highland where the water that's coming from the new Sterling Sewage Treatment Plant that East Valley Water District is building, a $200 million facility, and from the San Bernardino, their new water, what do they call it, water factory, clean water factory. The water from both of those will be trucked, will be piped all the way past the airport and to these new basins, and will be put in the ground there to continue to replenish our underground basin. And the great thing about those two is that that's not a new source of water. That's not us taking water like they tell us up in Northern California, stealing their water, which is a joke because 70% of their water goes under the Golden Gate Bridge. But that'll be, that'll be new sources of water for us that will be self-contained and recycling water for forever, up to 13 million gallons a day. So it's, it really is, it's a $100 million facility to put that all together, but that's where your tax dollars that are on your tax bill, that's where the projects are as we continue to make sure that there's water for your children and your grandchildren.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to take too much time because the guy after me is much, is much more interesting than I am.
I want to make sure that there, there may be other questions I want to make sure give a council opportunity to ask. Any questions of Mr. Harrison? He covered it all. Very, very good. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for the privilege.
Thanks, Conrad.
And our next special presentation is by Mark Gibbs. He is the Director of Aviation for the San Bernardino International Airport. Mr. Gibbs, thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Magna Bo and city council, community leaders. It's great to be here. Very much appreciate the invite to be here tonight. You know, it's no surprise to anyone, there is an airport in your community. It's called the San Bernardino International Airport, the former Norton Air Force Base, for those that aren't familiar with it, and it's a great regional asset. I'm excited today to give you an update as to what's happening at your local airport. So the, before we get into the presentation, I've got a presentation to walk you through what's happening tonight so you can visually see it and start to understand the airspace that, aircraft that are flying in and out of San Bernardino as well as other airports in the region, so you can visually see what's happening at the airport and what's happening over the airspace above your heads. But before I do that, I think it's important to take a step back and recognize how the airport was formed and who owns it. So it is a joint powers authority. It's owned by the cities of Loma Linda, the City of San Bernardino, City of Colton, City of Highland, and the County of San Bernardino. So there's an elected member provided from each of those jurisdictions, and that creates the joint powers authority that is the San Bernardino International Airport Authority. So tonight, hopefully this doesn't take too long. If I get a little long in the tooth, Mayor, please let me know. But a few activities I wanted to discuss. One is the former Norton Air Force Base, what's happening today, the Good Neighbor Program in our air services market. Former Norton Air Force Base. So in 1994, the Air Force Base closed, and with it came a lot of economic hardship that included the loss of over 10,000 jobs, but along with it walked away local investment, the tax base. It was essentially a local depression. For those of you that were part of it or were here in the community at that time, it was a very difficult time for the entire inland empire. I'm a Riverside guy, grew up in Riverside. I've been to Grand Terrace Church for a long time, used to play drums, actually, for the church in the 80s when it was a new thing, but very familiar with the community. I'm part of the community, just like many of you. So this is what the jobs numbers look like today. So as the, part of the mission of the Air Force Base, when it, when it, what was born out of the Air Force Base were two entities. One was the Airport Authority, and the other was a local reuse agency called the Inland Valley Development Agency. Ours was to bring jobs, economic activity back to the Air Force, excuse me, back to the Air Force Base, the aviation portion of it. The other one was to bring back jobs that were lost in the area around it that was owned by the Air Force Base, and that's what the IVDA did. Its job was to create economic activity with the express intent of bringing jobs back. And you can see, we've hit some milestones in recent years, and 2016 was the first year we finally brought back more jobs than were lost, but we haven't stopped there. So as the roads were, you know, reinvigor, roads were redefined, we partnered with a group to bring back development that brought back economic activity and jobs so we could build a financial base around the airport that could then be a launching pad. And as you can see, those jobs numbers have continued to increase. Works, we don't have the 2021 numbers, but you can see by 2020, we'd increased to over 14,000 jobs created through the airport and through the IVDA. I think you're going to see a nice jump again in 2021 with the addition of some of our new partners at the airport. So major employers, no surprise, Amazon has been a very large jobs creator. In fact, their first facility, their first warehouse facility happened on the IVDA property at the former golf course, and since that time, they've continued to add jobs and economic benefit to our collective region. As the airport guy, I'm super excited to see that the airport has made its way up to number three as of last year. I think this year, you'll find that the airport will be in the number-two position. But those, these are the major employers that have taken place and added to the growth around the airport. A lot of Fortune 500, Fortune 100, and even Fortune 50 companies are now located around the airport. So what's happening at the airport today? This is a lovely shot of our domestic terminal. Air cargo has been one of our growth markets in recent years, and I'm sure folks in the community have either seen the news or experienced, seen more heavy aircraft flying in and out of the airport. UPS was the first air cargo operator to join the airport. That happened really in 2017, but by 2018, they had a permanent agreement with the airport to operate and have been growing strongly ever since. Later that same year, Fred Smith came in and said, "I want what UPS has," and I'm not one to say no to Fred. He's kind of an industry legend that recreated air cargo in the industry. But what we've seen with these two carriers, particularly UPS, is a lot of growth in recent years. So as late as this last December, they are operating up to 12 aircraft a day, bringing in 400 new jobs to the airport that didn't exist before. And with this, with the growth and success of both UPS and FedEx, that led to additional interest by Amazon, and they established what is now the second-largest hub in the United States. Their main facility is in the middle of the country, as is for UPS and FedEx. Amazon's happens to be in Cincinnati, but we're the second-largest in the country after that. It's a significant investment by them in your local community. We were pretty excited about that because that took them about 13 months to construct a 100-acre site, but they did it with, well, water in mind, right? This is an investment, this is kind of speaks, I included this slide because it speaks to the investment that they made and the commitment to your community. This is not something that had to take place, but they did it because they felt it was the right investment. So you can see, this is a water infiltration system, and if you look at the size of the water recharge that's taking place underneath the apron, that's a significant benefit to the Bunker Hill Basin and the water that we all rely on. There's actually two of these on the site. So this is the second one. If you look at the bottom right-hand corner, this is a progress photo, and this is the ultimate effect of this investment in your community. So it's a 100-acre site, 40 acres of new aircraft ramp, 658,000-square-foot building. To date, it's created 1,700 new jobs at the airport, on its way to nearly 4,000 in the years ahead. Commitments to sustainability are also significant, 5.6 megawatts of solar on the roof. It's not included in that picture, but if you were to see it today, you'd see a very large solar system on top. But in addition to that, this was the launch customer. It's the only one in the world, when this launched, to have all, an all-electric fleet of cargo equipment, which again was another commitment to our local community to try to invest in the future, and that was a significant investment on their side. Again, it was the only one like it in the world. So what else is happening? So it's important to note, as our different business lines continue to grow and succeed in your region, you know, it's our goal to be a good neighbor to our surrounding communities. We understand that the growth taking place has impacts, and that's going to be more traffic overhead as additional economic activity takes place. And we developed the Good Neighbor Program to help provide resources to people that have questions, that have concerns. We want to know about those concerns. And so this program was launched about a year and a half ago, but it's really about, for us, you know, we deal with this kind of stuff every day. We understand why airplanes fly where they do and, you know, what solutions are out there, but we like to track that stuff first and foremost, and we're happy to have one-on-ones with any of your constituents that may have concerns with the activity that's taking place at the airport. This program is, it's immediately available. It's on our website, sbdaireport.com. You can quickly get to the site and start to understand some of the resources and that are available. So I brought one of those resources with us today to the meeting, and this is one of the informational videos that provides a little more context as to why airplanes fly where they do. Hopefully, I'm going to do this right with this fancy clicker in my hand. No guarantees, though. Is there a play button on this, Conrad?
No.
No? Are we going to ask the tech guys? Guys, there should be something you can click on on that that'll make it play.
.........
There you go. That was it.
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
It's called Breeze Airways, and it's from the founder of JetBlue Airways, as well as WestJet and Morris Air. So he's established quite a few new air carriers in his longstanding career. But he was really excited about us because it's the first time that he's ever launched from an airport that has not had commercial air service in the past. So that's a picture of their aircraft. Tickets went on sale today, and it's daily, non-stop service to San Francisco International Airport. So we're pretty excited about it. You can visit flybreeze.com to buy your tickets. I know I bought mine today. And fares start at $49. It's a fantastic experience through SBD. We've invested in right-sized facilities to provide convenient and easy access because the reality is, in the inland empire, we need more choices in air travel. And we're here to provide that. So thanks for having me. I'm happy to come back anytime, should you have any questions. And in the meantime, if your constituents have any concerns, please have them visit our website at sbdaireport.com. Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gibbs. Appreciate you being here and enjoyed the information you shared. And video was great, but it's nice to know that you have the Good Neighbor Program. Thank you so much. All right, so we'll move back to our agenda. We have consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there requests for items to be removed from the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to remove four and five and discuss them together.
Thank you. Four and five, are there any other removals at this time? All right, I will entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Wilson. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So item number four that was removed, reauthorize and extend remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Grand Terrace, successor agency to the Grand Terrace Community Redevelopment Agency, and the Grand Terrace Housing Authority for 30-day period pursuant to Ralph M. Brown Act and Assembly Bill Number 361.
Madam Mayor, council members? Thank you. And actually, I'd like to deal with these as a package deal because they're pretty well entwined. And item number five is a resolution to terminate the local emergency regarding the coronavirus and as was ratified in 2020. So for some background, we all know we've gone through the pandemic. We also know that the restrictions are easing. San Bernardino County, two weeks ago, rescinded their emergency order. The state is relaxing masking and other restriction requirements. As part of this, the City of Grand Terrace did enact an emergency ordinance, which allows us to operate under the emergency conditions and gave some extraordinary power to the city manager and the council outside of the typical operations. As this is winding down, we're looking at it, it's probably time, from an operational standpoint, to stop acting like an emergency and go back to business as normal. But the hair on the dog is that by rescinding the emergency order, we also limit our ability or revoke our ability to have Zoom meetings, and we'll have to go back to in-person meetings as we did before the pandemic. So rather than deal with these independently, I wanted to make sure that we were clear that council was aware of the implications of taking either action, and it's open to you for discussion, and I'm here for questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bolowich. Are there questions for the city manager? No questions. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Close public comment and return back to staff. Any further comments? City Attorney, do you have a comment on this?
I don't, other than to say that if the council desires to continue utilizing AB-361, which allows for virtual meetings, my recommendation would be to adopt the AB-361 resolution and hold off on the lifting of the emergency. If the council is indifferent as to AB-361, and the council is comfortable lifting the emergency, then I would recommend not adopting the AB-361 and solely adopting the second resolution to lift the emergency.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And so I'll come back to council for discussion and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Wilson?
Mayor, I guess I'd like to ask staff, how's this going to affect our availability towards funds? Because realistically, these funds are dedicated to the COVID situation, and if we ratify the lift, are we also going to shut off the Hydra?
Now, the funds, the ARP funds are already committed. So, and they're ours to disperse as, within the guidelines as we feel necessary. So they were committed as part of the emergency, but for us, the emergency is now over. Kind of similar to, if it were a flood or a wildfire, funding would be committed during the emergency, yet after the rains stop and the fire is out, you could still disperse those funds and use them.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, if I may, one additional comment?
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. On the issue of virtual meetings, if we do not invoke AB-361, that simply means that you won't be able to do a meeting virtually and not have to post your agenda at that location. Under the traditional Brown Act, you still have the opportunity to virtually participate, except you have to post your agenda at your location, allow the members of the public to participate from that location.
Which is how it was if somebody called in before.
That's correct, yes. And the other part of it, and I was discussing with the city clerk earlier, is there's also nothing prohibiting members of the public from continuing to use Zoom or virtual. They may, the public may. They're not obligated to and not required to, but we can provide it.
So we can make that an option for the public?
That is correct.
Just council members cannot participate in that manner?
That is correct. We would have to post at your location, wherever you're at.
All right, so it's time for discussion between council members and consideration of a motion. What shall we do? We'll take item four to begin with, which is the, well, actually, we should probably look at adopting the resolution terminating the local emergency first. What would my colleagues like to do with that?
Mayor, I don't, I don't see or hear an advantage to us jumping into changing our status. Is this something that's been initiated from a state situation, or what have other jurisdictions done?
Well, the county has terminated their emergency. And so if we're in the county and the county's no longer calling this an emergency, I'm wondering how we can, we can state affirmatively that we still have emergency conditions in our city.
Well, I don't think it needs to be permanently, but obviously, you know, it's a pretty quick run. The way the county worked with some things is they actually shut down their entire building and safety department, public works, and the whole shooting match, and at a point made it almost impossible for businesses to work. So I don't think I put a lot of faith in what the county does.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is it's hard for us to justify a local emergency. And then I'm wondering what the benefit is to continue with the local emergency. Do we, are there any opinions about what we gain by continuing to declare a local emergency? Councilmember Robles?
Yeah, I had some sentiments about not rushing into it, but again, if the county lifts theirs and it's based on numbers, if the numbers come back, we can just always go that, that route of emergency.
Yeah, we could adopt another one if need be.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yeah, Mayor, we got to move forward. Just can't just keep on being emergency after emergency when the county is out of it and other cities are out of it, states out of it. We've just got to move forward. And like you said, if we need to come back and bring an emergency, then we will, you know. We just, we got to put this behind us. I think, you know, the city did a good job working with the county and all precautions that we can make, you know. Unfortunately, towards the last of it, I got COVID, but, you know, who would have guessed? But, yeah, we need to move forward, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the gen item.
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion to approve item number five by Mayor Protem Hussey, second by Councilmember Robles. Any further discussion? May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now that we did that, do we even have a leg to stand on for item number four?
I would say no, and I would recommend that the staff pull the item.
Okay. Staff, would you like to pull that item?
Staff officially pulls the item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes our consent calendar items. We have an opportunity for public comment on items not on the agenda. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So I'm going to close public comment and move on to the rest of our agenda. We have no public hearing, no unfinished business. We have no new business? Wow. We do have requests for future agenda item by city council, and it says none on my little sheet here, but I see that we have one. So Mayor Protem, you have an item that you're bringing forward to?
Yes, Mayor. I know we got an ordinance on this, but I'm just wondering if, you know, I like to bring the ordinance up for modification and prohibit primary business from using food vendors at business locations as supplemental businesses. I got numerous calls one Saturday about a food truck being in an area for 12 hours on a prime restaurant day. And being on a city council, you know, our jobs to take care, we beg these companies to come in brick and mortar and would take care of them. Another concern was that the food truck belonged to a business that didn't have anything to do with food. So, and I know that we do have food trucks, you know, on special occasions and stuff. So I just, you know, we're a body, and I told them, I go, I can't make a decision. We're a body here, you know, this has got to be brought to the council. So I would like to, you know, look into this matter with the council and see what, if the ordinance needs to be brought up, modified, or brought to date. So that's my main concern. I'd just like to look into this so we don't have future food carts or food vendors or anything taken away from our businesses that we're, you know, supposed to protect.
I could support bringing the ordinance up for rediscussion. I don't know if I would, I can't support straight out saying I want to prohibit primary businesses in the way it's written, but I can certainly support a discussion about the ordinance.
Yeah, and prohibit is probably a big word, but I want to look into ordinance and see what we could do if we have, you know, any, I think the ordinance was put in 1990, if we have any modifications that need to be done, and to bring it up to, you know, our standards. And here also public input on this ordinance and business owners' inputs.
Okay, so that's your motion, and I can second that. Any discussion on this item?
Mayor, there's a possibility that we may want to look at exempting of 501(c)(3) from that kind of requirement, considering the fact that we may have some situations where we've got food trucks or whatever that might be appropriate in relation to little activities that we might put on that might be close to other food establishments but would be serving just that particular function.
Which I believe I'm suggesting would be part of a discussion of the ordinance in and of itself. To me, is a bigger, is a bigger discussion than, than just...
Yeah, it's a bigger umbrella.
Focusing on prohibiting primary businesses.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. Yes, it's a bigger umbrella. And like I said, the 501(c), you know, our businesses know it's coming, and we're not by, you know, prime locations, we do, because I know we have a lot of, you know, fundraisers and that, but it's usually out of the main thoroughfare, and our businesses are, know everything's coming, they know it's not prime time, and know it's not, you know, prime day for them to lose their customer base. So, yes, the overall umbrella. But, yeah, prohibit's a bad, you know, it's not bad, but, you know, it's a, it oversteps to look into this agenda, so.
Okay, so the motion is to bring back the ordinance for discussion and perhaps modification and have public input, and that was, that's what was seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. Any request? Well, we don't generally ask for requests to speak because we're not really speaking on an item necessarily. So if you would, Madam Clerk, please give us a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
And Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. We will come for council communications, beginning with Councilmember Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we attended a Little League grand opening, and I got an opportunity to watch the mayor pitch a couple of balls. And one of them was a softball, and it had wings. And then we also, she also pitched a hard ball, and it got a little bit closer, did dribble right over the play, which I thought was, you know, entertaining at least. And then we went from there and attended the Eagle Scout ceremony at the, here at the community center for young Mr. McClelland, and congratulate him again, as well as his parents. We know there's a lot of work put into these things, and the basic tenants of the Boy Scouts remains intact, and think that they are sound and happy to lend our facility to be able to honor his Eagle Scout ceremony. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Bill Hussey?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
All right. I have a couple things. I will begin with OmniTrans meeting. We, they, they gave us an update on bus stop safety improvement implementation plan, and also a staffing and compensation comprehensive review and updates to policy. They called for a public hearing for federal transit admission funding, which will help to pay for some of these improvements. And what they're looking at is improving mobility, visibility, and response times at San Bernardino Transit Center also. So they have security officers that have begun using what they call T3 Patrolers. They're like little Segway scooters that are electric, and it helps them to get around and be there so that those that are, the traveling public realizes that there are security officers able to get around quickly and able to be there to make sure that they see what's going on and everything is happening as it should. So they conduct these patrols, enhance the customer service, and then the vehicles serve as a great tool for developing positive community relations, because I think the passengers say, what is that you're riding? They look pretty fun, actually. All right, so in response to the tight labor market, we are, the staff is using the board-approved service resumption triggers. OmniTrans reduced its services in January 2022, and they are currently operating at 72% of planned service levels compared to the 78% during August and December of 2021. So that's not good news. They had initially planned that they would be up to 83% in January of 2022. The service reduction was necessary to provide reliable service levels, avoid coach operator burnouts, and respond to COVID leaves and tight labor market. So OmniTrans is looking for those that want to operate their coaches and do some administrative and other maintenance jobs. So if anyone is really, really looking for a career, OmniTrans has a good package, and we just reviewed their salary for all of the, all of the areas to make sure that they are at least market, if not maybe a little bit better. So now's a good time to check out OmniTrans for their hiring, for their hiring, and they are doing job fairs. They want to get those service levels back up, and so they need coach operators to do it. And so in November 2021, OmniTrans was awarded $79,000 by SBCTA as part of a 2021 Transportation Development Act Transit Stop Access Program. This was a competitive program that allowed OmniTrans to receive funding to improve bus stop amenities. So we received that update, and they will be looking at lighting, signs, benches, and upgrading shelters and doing ADA improvements. Nine projects in the geographic area of Grand Terrace and the Colton routes are slated for part of this improvement plan. We do not have to fight with Colton. They have, they have identified closely geographically related bus stops for both of our cities, and so that's really good news. SBCTA, the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, we discussed in-person and virtual board committee meetings, and acting as the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and Council of Governments has decided to go back to in-person meetings at this time. We also discussed regional and subregional planning. And what they're talking about is the issue of looking at the region and the affordable housing requirements throughout the region, and they have a framework that they're putting together for a housing trust. And I believe that they are inviting city managers to weigh in on that discussion, too. It's kind of an interesting concept, but it's early in the planning, but perhaps we could get a presentation about that to consider if it's something that we would be interested in taking part in. And so Little League ceremonies were fun. I want to thank the parents, the coaches, they, you know, they do the coaching, they take care of the fields, they form a board that, you know, that is the reason that we have a league, and they put in a lot of work to make sure that the kids have a good time playing. And then, of course, they invite me out periodically to throw a baseball and a softball, and I get to use that as a, as a teaching moment for the, for the players, to let them know that practice is important, and so is warming up, because it really enhances your performance. The Eagle Scout Court of Honor was also a privilege to be there to represent the city. We did give a nice commendation to Mr., young Mr. McClelland. He is responsible for our flag retirement box that is here at City Hall, which is a really nice resource for our residents when their flags are in disrepair and they need to do something with them. They take them to that box, and then the, then the Boy Scouts will, they do periodic flag retirement ceremonies. And then the Blue Mountain hike. Thank you so much to city staff for all their work. Madam City Clerk and her husband came out from, from their homes up in the high desert, so that was wonderful to have you there. That was an early morning for you, I know. The organizations that came out to support, and we had little cheer factory cheerleaders up at the top cheering us on when we got there. It was a wonderful day, and the weather, oh, you plan the weather so perfectly, Mr. City Manager, thank you so much. And so that is where I will end, and I will say, Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments for us?
You know, I put the weather order in special just for you, so hopefully, everything else runs as smoothly. Can you guys start the video since the mayor brought that up? We got to sort a brief video that shows the hike. We got to sort a brief video that shows the hike.[1481.01]